At this time, I'd like to call into session the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee Open Meeting of Wednesday, May 17, 2023. I have the honor of serving as Chair Pro Tem as being the longest-serving member on the board. I won't give the number of years. And so I have the honor of doing, taking nominations for Chair. We have in our policy a B-240 that the chairpersonship rotates between Northborough and Southborough. And last time it was Northborough. And I want to just commend Sean Bevan for the, for Sean O'Shea. Thank you. Thank you.
Sean deserves to be commended for a lot.
He does dual roles around here. Sean O'Shea, I just want to thank you, I apologize, for the great job that you did in a year when we had contract negotiations, budgets, and athletic complex. So, thank you very much for your leadership and a great role. I'd also like to congratulate Chris Covino, Sean, and Paul Desmond, and John, on their reelections to three-year terms on the Regional School Committee. So, and they're voted in by Northborough residents and Southborough residents. So, thank you to the voters in a great election. So, at this time, I'd like to take nomination of officers for the Chair from Southborough. Paul?
I'd like to nominate Kathleen Polichkov as Chair.
Is there a second? Second by Kathy Key. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we're going to close out the nominations for Chair. All those in favor of Kathleen being Chair for the next school year, 2023, 2024, please signify. And it's unanimous. Congratulations, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Big shoes to fill.
All right, then, let's get this moving. Do I hear any nominations for Vice Chair? Paul?
I'd like to nominate Matthew Spencer as Vice Chair.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joan. Any discussion? Any other nominations? Then, all in favor of Matt Spencer for Vice Chair for this coming school year? Fraser Hand? Yes, you can vote for yourself. That is unanimous. Excellent. Thank you very much. Moving on to Secretary. Do I hear any nominations for Secretary? Paul?
I'd like to nominate Kathy Key for Secretary.
Sounded like a defensive move.
Can I just clarify? The Secretary this year is in charge of graduation.
Kathy, do you accept?
Sure.
Overwhelmingly, yes. Are there any discussion? Any other nominations? All right, all those in favor?
I'd like to second, second the nomination.
Oh, I thought you did. I'm sorry. Okay. Seconded by Joan. Good. Thank you. Keep me on my toes. All those in favor. And that is unanimous as well. All right, we've got our board. Thank you very much for serving.
You're welcome.
Okay. And the next thing on our agenda is special recognition. I will turn it over to the superintendent to do so.
Sure. So, this evening, we want to take a moment and recognize Ben Chanzer for his work on the School Committee as the student liaison. So, Ben, we just want to thank you for your leadership. I think you've done a great job thinking about what will endure beyond your leadership. And I think you've been a great role, role model for your, for your fellow students. And I think you're leaving the SAC and this position in a better place for the next cohort of students to take on these roles. So, on behalf of the School Committee and the district, we have a small token of our appreciation. And Ben, I do have to admit, I lost the envelope somewhere. There's no envelope, but that will save you a step. And I'm sure the committee would like to say a few words as well.
Thank you very much. Who would like to open it right now?
Wow, wrapped and a bag.
I know.
Cheryl Lepre, once again.
Pandora's fourth knocks. Four cent of the box from the hands.
Oh, is it a gavel?
That's excellent.
It's great.
Read the inscription.
Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others? MLK Junior. Some nice Dartmouth stickers to go with it. Thank you, guys. That's so sweet.
And there's one more gift.
Marv's rules.
Perfect.
You need to know when to gavel.
Yeah.
It does go with the gavel. Thank you. There's a lot of them.
There are a lot of them, and I'm sure you're going to take command of all of them.
Do you need a copy?
I've got Robert rules, Robert's rules for dummies.
Well, thank you very much. That's very sweet. I appreciate it.
I would love to just say, Ben, I've, I've been a principal for 12 years. This is my 12th year being a principal, so I've had 12 student reps. About that, I think maybe in the pandemic, we might have had it lapse there. But you're without a doubt, and I think everybody's aware of this, the most outstanding, just strongest student leader I've ever had the pleasure of working with. And I'm goodness working with you. We've worked a lot together for several years on everything from the mascot to the athletic complex, to the renaming of the mascot, to carnivals, to establishing this, re-establishing this position. And none of that would have been a reality without your, your, just your ambition and your organization and all the other many qualities you have. So, good luck. Dartmouth's lucky to have you.
Thank you so much.
We'll see you on Capitol Hill. Oh, now we get to move to a public hearing. Fun. So, do you want to open the public hearing, see if there's anyone here? Sure, I will open up the public hearing for school choice on Wednesday, May 17, 2023. Is there anyone who is here for the hearing? No? Therefore, I'm going to close the school choice hearing. That was very informative. Okay. Now, we need to move to executive session. So, would somebody like to make the motion to move to executive session? Thank you.
Sure. I will make a motion to move to executive session to discuss strategy with respective collective bargaining with Algonquin Regional Teachers Association, Unit C Educational Support Professionals, and Algonquin Regional High School custo, school custodians, due to the Chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with the intent to return to open session after.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Joan. And that is a roll call vote. So, we'll start with John.
Yes. Matt Spencer, yes.
Yeah. You don't, yeah.
I didn't just say yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And that is unanimous. You only need to say your name when you're on. Then, let us reconvene at the open meeting of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, Wednesday, May 17, 2023. Next on our agenda, agenda is public comment. Have any public comments?
I got one little thing.
Please, do share.
A semi-live update from the varsity baseball game that just ended.
Yes.
Where we headed into the last of the, the last inning, we were down by three runs, wound up winning 14 to 7.
Wow. Congratulations. What a round. Okay. Thank you for sharing.
It wasn't even close.
Okay, then, next is action on minutes. Minutes of April 26, 2023. Do I hear a motion to accept them?
I'm moved.
Moved by Paul Desmond.
Seconded.
Seconded by Matt. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Okay.
Educational policy on new business legislative update.
So, just a brief update on the state budget process. The Senate Ways and Means did release its budget and is in debate at this point in time. Some changes from the House Ways and Means and the Senate Ways and Means budget are, one, the Senate Ways and Means did not fund universal free meals. However, there is conversations at the state level that that will be funded through potentially a different mechanism with the governor, but it's something we'll continue to advocate for. Universal free meals is very important in terms of moving this budget forward. Regional transportation was 100% in the House Ways and Means, and it was 90% in the Senate Ways and Means. So, we did think that it was too good to be true to have 100% reimbursement. However, the budget needs to go to Conference Committee, so there is still hope, but that's something we'll advocate for with our legislative delegation. And then, the other is the change is the Chapter 70 aid, the minimum aid for per people in both State, the Senate and House for $60. That is an increase of $30, so that is good news. And I think those are the major differences between the two. So, once the Senate Ways and Means finishes debating, it'll go to the Conference Committee, and then budget will be finalized and brought to the governor for hopefully signature. So, we'll know more in the next month or two. I will share that we are getting some interesting information from our legislative delegation around potential revenue declines at the state level. We heard the 9C cuts. We've heard that term over the past month and a half. And today, we learned that ARPA funding to the communities is something that's being discussed at the national level as being part of the balancing of the budget. So, we will monitor that very closely.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Okay. Then, town meeting recap.
So, I think we had a very successful town meeting. Just would like to thank the School Committee for its support during the budget process. I think passing the 9 through 12 budget in Northborough was always a milestone for us. It also is symbolic of a lot of hard work with the finance team, principals, the leadership team, and the committee. So, it was unanimously supported. And also, just want to thank the community for supporting the athletic complex project and entrusting us in moving forward with that project. And we, you know, think it's going to be a, a great addition to Algonquin and serve future students at Algonquin well, well into the future. So, just want to thank the community for its support on that project and also thank the committee for its advocacy moving that forward.
Any questions? Okay. And moving on, math department presentation.
Sure. So, this evening, we have Beth Dorr, who is Department Chair for the mathematics program here at Algonquin Regional High School. She will provide an exciting update.
I'm gonna start presenting. See if it comes up. I'll bring my computer up here. And, you're good. So, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Beth Dorr, who's our wonderful department head for mathematics. And she's so good that she presented, that she got this presentation ready a month ahead of time. She thought she was presenting last month and texted me that afternoon and was like, I'm on tonight, aren't I? So, that's why the date is on here. And she's had it in the can since then. So, Beth, it's all your cooking.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Beth Dorr. I'm the chairperson of the math department here at Algonquin. So, we've had some recent changes. We had three really experienced teachers retire in the last two years. Ellen Marianni, and Nancy Hart, and Maggie Perrow. And all of them have been longtime teachers. We lost a lot of experience. They're greatly missed, but we've replaced them with three new hires who've been working out really well. So, our new hires, none of them were first-year teachers. They all came to us with a little bit of experience. Catherine had worked for one year. Ben Berger had worked for six years in Framingham. And Corey Poole had worked for two years at a private school in Sudbury. So, they've been working out really well. We've been very pleased with them. And here we are, as a department. So, there were 15 of us. Not quite everyone was here. The one person who didn't want to dress up actually had a personal day that day. But this, this was quite an effort with us painting after school and before school and making hats, but we had a lot of fun with it. So, that's, that's us as a department. So, we're really excited to be back from the pandemic and getting back to normal because what we went through for the past few years really was extraordinary and very difficult. So, we're just really happy to have kids in classrooms and teachers teaching and kids working together. And, you know, we see a lot of students collaborating, which has been really nice because we missed that in the past. And so, here we have some pictures of people working together. The picture over on the left looks like two students, but that's actually our new teacher, Corey Poole, who chose to sit down with all the students. But Corey's pretty young. He's, I think he's 25 right now, but he's been a fantastic addition to the department. And as a result of the pandemic, we've really changed a lot of what we do. Canvas has become an incredibly important part of what we do. So, we got used to really posting everything up on Canvas, and that has continued. And I think that that's been a benefit for the students. So, teachers put everything up there. Our grades are up there. We have blank worksheets up there. We have answer keys up there. So, it's really been a nice place to kids, for kids to go when they need some extra support. And then, we've become much more technologically savvy as a result of the pandemic, too. And I think that, you know, it was a big learning curve for a lot of us. But most of the math teachers now, we started to teach using iPads so that we could project while kids were at home, so, or when they're in the class with us. And many of us have continued that. So, we have our lessons on an iPad. You can write on the iPad. Kids can see what you're writing, but then you can actually save it and post it so that if students miss class, they can still get the benefit of seeing everything that you did in class. So, it's really kind of surprising how many of us are doing this. I'd say more than three-quarters of the math department now is using iPads, and it's worked out really well. And then, another new technology initiative, we were able to get 30 TI-84 graphing calculators. So, Stephanie wrote a grant for us, and we have these spread throughout the department. They were primarily intended for some of our lower-level students who have to take MCAS, because this graphing calculator, this, this beautiful, powerful calculator is built into the MCAS exam. And so, when kids are taking the MCAS and they click to pull down a calculator, one of the options was this TI-84. So, now, our lower-level classes have classroom sets, and kids use them every day. And so, everyone knows how to use this calculator that shows up in the MCAS. So, that's been really nice. And we also can take that and share it throughout the department. So, if someone wants to be doing a unit on statistics and they need 30 graphing calculators, we have 30 that are rechargeable, and that's been really nice. And then, here's a picture of Ms. Cronin's class, and they're all sitting, working collaboratively. You see, they all have those bright yellow graphing calculators, and that's what our grant got us. And then, another thing that we've had since the pandemic is we have had a Title I Math Tutor working with us. And so, Heather Cilio has been with us three days a week. She has a room up in the math hallway, and students who need extra support can work with her. So, she is there three days, and we just have kids either that teachers have recommended to her that need some extra support, or if a special ed teacher thinks a student needs more support, or, you know, classroom teachers can recommend it to. Kids can also ask for it themselves. But she's been pretty busy, and she'll have, you know, she usually meets with, you know, one student at a time, individual help, but then there might be, you know, someone else that comes in for halfway through the period. So, she gets to two or three kids a period, and it really has been incredible. So, as a department, we've really been focusing on midterm and final common assessments. So, we want students to end up with the same experience in the classroom regardless of what kind of teacher they had. And so, by doing this, we work collaboratively to make the midterms and finals. And then, we do analyze the results and try to figure out, you know, is there an, an area that kids seem to not be understanding so that we can modify our instruction? We've also really taken to using Google. So, as a department, we have the drive, and we have just everything up there. And so, we're able to share tests and quizzes and worksheets and activities, and this has been a really nice thing. And then, this year, we've had a couple of PLCs, those are our professional learning communities where we've had some time built into the day for teachers to meet. So, we had one for calculus honors and another one for data analysis and statistics. And lots of teachers are begging for these, so we've got to decide who gets one next year because I think pretty much everybody wants one. I did just want to touch on our math M-14 course. And so, you see on the left is our Northborough and Southborough grade 10. On the right is the state of Massachusetts. So, as usual, you know, we're performing well above the state, and we have 97% of Algonquin students are the passing score, and that was for the MCAS last year. And then, the other thing that I thought would be interesting was to look at what's happened to our scores from 2019, so before the pandemic, and then to well after the pandemic. And so, you know, as you can see, our scores have gone down a little bit, but still, I think that we're in pretty good shape, and I think that we are going to see those scores come back up.
Just a question.
Yes.
It is interesting, and I'm just curious, you don't have that same figure for the state? I assume it probably looks the same?
Yeah. We, we've always been well above the state, you know, but no. I ended up making this one myself. The other one I just took from the DESE website. But I would expect it would be pretty much the same pattern as we always see. And then, more scores. So, our AP scores, our students in the math department do really well on the AP exams. So, we had 39 students take the calculus AB exam. 100% of those earned passing scores of three or above, and the average score was 4.7. In calculus BC, which is the harder course, we had 96% earn a three or three to five. And again, 4.7 was the average score. And AP Statistics, 84% earned a score of three or above. So, I especially thought this calc BC line was interesting, and I went to the calculus teacher and said, so, there was one person who didn't get a three, like this never happens. And what Sean McGrath shared with me is that student transferred to Algonquin as a 12th grader. So, he didn't have the ninth and 10th and 11th grade experience that the rest of the students that were in the class had. So, I thought that was really interesting. And, you know, Sean McGrath just does an absolutely incredible job with those students, as does Carla Reynolds with the AP Stats. And then, the last thing I wanted to talk about was just some of the extracurricular activities that involve math. So, we have a varsity math team. We have a freshman math team. And then, we also have the Math Honor Society. So, our varsity math team competes in a bunch of different competitions. We compete in the Worcester County, that's the Wocumall League. We compete in the New England Math League. And then, there are some nationwide exams that students take here that reach as properly for them. So, the varsity team is coached by Eileen Cronin and myself. The freshman team is coached by Eileen Falcone. And this is a picture of our freshman team. And this year, our freshman team has had incredible success. So, they compete in the Worcester County Math League, and the top five students out of, you know, 100 or so were all Algonquin students. So, the community advocate came out today and interviewed Eileen Falcone and the freshman math team. You'll be seeing an article in the community advocate shortly about them. And this is our freshmen with their, with their plaques that they got. So, those were the, the five. And interestingly, the top person is actually an eighth grader at Melican. So, she is extremely advanced, and she has been taking, she's just really interested in math. She has tested out of Algebra II honors at the high school. She tested out of Geometry honors at the high school. As an eighth grader right now, she's in my pre-calculus honors class with, I think, a 99% average. And she's not in my class. She's following along on Canvas. And she does come by about once a week to get some extra help, but she's a really incredible student. So, she's the second one from the left. So, she was the first-place winner in the freshman league. And she also competes on the varsity team for me. And then, these are a couple pictures of the Math Honor Society. And so, the Math Honor Society is coached by Eileen Falcone, and they run some competitions at the two middle schools. And so, the students write some questions. They go over to the middle schools. They have a little competition. We've had Texas Instruments give us two graphing calculators for each school to win as a prize. So, we've done this for the last two years. And then, they also went over to Peaslee, and they did a little multiplication bee with the fourth graders. And you can see, the picture there in the middle is our high school students surrounding the student who won. All right, and I think that that's it. Thanks, Beth.
Any questions? Comments?
I'll, I'll just say that's amazing, and like, kudos to everyone for supporting that eighth-grade student and raising her up where she's clearly doing amazing things and not being, sitting there, you know, floundering and being bored, and you're embracing her brilliance. That's so great to see. Kudos. Everyone's so smart.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. And I had a question. To get on to the freshman math team with varsity, do they have to, is it an open enrollment system, or how does that work?
We welcome everyone.
That's good.
Yes.
That is. And, you know, last month at our meeting, we had Read Across America, where the high school students, the sports athletics, went down to the elementary schools. And you're doing your presentation. You answered my question because I thought, what a wonderful coordination. If we could get the high school sk, kids who are interested in math to go down, but you're doing it at the elementary level and in middle school. So, kudos to you, and please thank the kids for that effort. They're being some, such great role models. Thank you.
Yes, they sure are.
I had a question, too, about the, that eighth-grade student. Could you just talk a little more about how you make that work and, you know, what she does?
So, every year, I have a lot of parents that contact me that tell me that they have advanced math students and they want to skip math classes. And we don't allow kids to skip math classes unless they're really prepared, and so, we make them prove to us that they've learned the curriculum. What we've done is we've taken our final exams, and that's the starting point, but we've added more to it. Because the final exam doesn't cover everything that you've learned. It's really kind of just the most important topics. So, we've added a little bit more content to it. We now have a three-hour exam for Algebra II honors, for Geometry honors, for pre-calculus honors. So, when students, when parents contact me throughout the year and say they want their kids to skip a class, I say, great, but they need to come in.
school students, the sports athletics, went down to the elementary schools and you're doing your presentation, you answered my question because I thought what a wonderful coordination. If we could get the high school kids who are interested in math to go down, but you're doing it at the elementary level and in middle school. So kudos to you and please thank the kids for that effort. They're being such great role models. Thank you.
Yes, they sure are.
I had a question too about that eighth grade student. Could you just talk a little more about how you make that work and, you know, what she does?
So every year I have a lot of parents that contact me that tell me that they have advanced math students and they want to skip math classes. And we don't let kids to skip math classes unless they're really prepared. And so we make them prove to us that they've learned the curriculum. What we've done is we've taken our final exams and that's the starting point, but we've added more to it. Because the final exam doesn't cover everything that you've learned. It's really kind of just the most important topics. So we've added a little bit more content to it. We now have a three hour exam for Algebra II honors, for geometry honors, for pre-calculus honors. So when students, when parents contact me throughout the year and say they want their kids to skip a class, I say, great, but they need to come in and take this test. So I will give it at the beginning of June, we'll do it one afternoon from 3:00 PM till 6:00 PM. And we require students to get a 90 or above in order to skip the class. And most kids that come in, you know, I have parents that are like, my student has gone to Russian math school for the last five years and they go to Kumon and they do this and they do that. They're getting, you know, 39%, 25%. So they really are not prepared to go on. But then we have students like this eighth grader who got a 100% on the Algebra II honors placement exam. And she hadn't finished geometry yet. So I said to the teachers at Melican, what are you doing with her next year? And they said, well, she's teaching herself geometry right now. So I'm like, all right, send her up to the high school and to August, we'll give her a test. And again, she got like a 95. And so now she's in a class with juniors and seniors.
That's great.
But she's taking all these classes?
No, she's taught herself. She's taught herself.
So she's testing out of these classes?
Yes. She has, like, I've given her textbooks tomorrow.
Yeah.
She has textbooks. She'll read the textbooks. Her father is a mathematician of some sort. He coaches the middle school math team.
That's incredible.
And she has an older sister and, you know, she comes and she'll type in questions to me.
So she just sees the assignments on Canvas and does them?
Yeah, my assignments are on Canvas. She can see everything that's coming up and when it's due and also the lessons that I teach from. All my notes are up there, so she can see those.
Wow.
Yeah, and when she has a question, she comes by and we meet seven to eight in the morning or 2:30 to 3:30 in the afternoon and get her questions answered. And then she comes in and gets a hundred on the test.
Is there anyone at the high school doing something similar to that?
Excuse me?
Is there anyone at the high school doing something similar? Are they just more advanced than whatever their grade level?
You mean more advanced than what we teach?
Like greater than calc BC?
I guess, yeah.
No, so the highest course that we teach is Advanced Placement Calculus BC, which is like calculus one and calculus two in college. So no, we don't have any, you know, and I think maybe in the past at some point, maybe we did have some independent studies with students who were doing higher level things. We're currently not doing anything like that. And when we do get students who are more advanced than what we teach, then they talk to guidance and they set themselves up to take a class, an online class. I think they take like calc III at University of Chicago or something like that.
Great. Thank you.
So didn't, I feel like my neighbor did something when she was a senior in high school, which took some of her classes here and then some at WPI. Does that sound familiar? Was that, I don't know if it was for math. I thought it was math.
Yes, so WPI has a...
Are you talking about the Docertys?
Yeah.
So what that was is when students are entering 11th grades, some of them leave Algonquin and go to Mass Academy at WPI.
Okay.
And so they take classes at Mass Academy and they're dual enrolled at WPI and Mass Academy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so.
I got you.
And we do have some of our top students are applied to do that.
Okay.
And we hate to lose them, but...
Yeah. Just to talk about in general how well students are prepared and it starts at elementary and middle school and then is enhanced here. Matt asked a question about the M-CAS and is our scores reflective of state or whatever? And he said, we do a little better. We do a lot better. Our meets, our exceeding expectations in meets is 73% versus the state is below 50%. So, you know, our students are well instructed and succeed accordingly, yeah. Math scores across the state are pretty depressed, particularly after the pandemic. So the fact that it's only a small block here is, says a lot.
I'd love to just add two quick things. So one thing, and they're unrelated to each other, but one thing is that with the later start time, providing extra help has been a challenge and extra help is a real cultural, culturally super important in the math department. And many of our math teachers come in early and provide extra help a little bit in the morning. So if you are up in the hallway at 7:30, half an hour before school starts, it's not unusual to have half of the department there providing extra help on any given day. Many of them are young, have young families and so getting home earlier in the afternoon is something that they're managing. So that's, I think, does speak to their dedication and it's not unusual to see students coming in for that. And then additionally and unrelated, like I said, Beth has done a wonderful job. She's managing the trip from our students from London who are coming at the end of next week. And they're coming primarily to visit our math classes and to see what math instruction looks like in the states. And then we're going to have some other fun activities and they're going to see other parts of the American high school experience as well. But primarily it's around our math program and Beth has done a really exceptional job of organizing that, planning it and working with our visitors. Next week, they arrive on Thursday.
Good question.
So I kind of ask this question to every single department, but I'm interested, how do you interact with Melican and Trotter as it relates to ensuring that the way that they teach is preparing them for the way that you teach? And I ask this because I'm fairly certain that in Trotter, there's been some pilot programs as well as Melican as it relates to how math is taught. And I know that, I'm not quite certain that the way that it's being proposed to be taught at Trotter and Melican is the same way that you teach it. And so my question to you is, what is your opinion on that as Trotter and Melican make a decision to change the way in which they teach? And how is that going to impact the sixth and seventh and eighth graders as they elevate themselves up to ninth grade?
So they are looking at the Carnegie textbooks, that whole series. And it has been piloted in both middle schools. Melican really, I think, embraced it a little bit more than Trotter did. And I don't know if that's because Trotter has been very successful with what they've done. I think Melican stuck with it a little bit longer than Trotter did and the Melican teachers are so excited about this. It is a really different way of presenting material, but it's not to say that we don't do that at the high school. And so when I look at how Carnegie is taught, one of the things that they'll do is they'll give a problem and they'll have kids collaboratively jump in and see what they can make sense of. And we do things like that at the high school. There's this whole philosophy of experience, experience first, formalize later, EFFL lessons. And we'll do that. We'll put kids in groups and say, here's a problem. Let's see if you can solve it. And get a great discussion going. And then as a result of the discussion, questions arise about how to do things. And then we'll formalize it by introducing, you know, the way to do it. So it's not completely foreign. We are doing stuff like that at the high school right now. The other thing that I think about is the math curriculum spirals. Okay, so you see things in sixth grade and it gets built on in seventh grade and in eighth grade and in ninth grade. And so we're continually reinforcing curriculum that students have learned before. And, you know, we're, I am optimistic that this is going to be a really beneficial move, especially, what they say is that it's especially beneficial for those lower level students. And when I talked to Stephanie about this, our hope is really like, can we get those lower level students and bring them up to grade level? And I think that this program could help us to do that. And maybe we'll be able to eliminate that low level of math class and bring those kids into a mid-level class where they're having great mathematical discussions.
So I think that's great and that's similar. So I'm glad that you answered that way. My only observation is, I think, I may have mentioned this to you, I just think that we should be thoughtful on how we're communicating all of this positive because I don't necessarily know that we tie them all together as it relates to talking to the community, as it relates to the parents and whatnot. And I guess I'm concerned that people, if they don't have an opportunity to listen to this meeting or they don't have an opportunity to speak, you know, and work with Gary or work at Melican, they don't necessarily have an opportunity to get all of that information. And so I guess I'm concerned that there's bits and pieces that could, you know, could create concern. That's all.
And John, I can speak to that briefly. So Dr. Reinhardt and I actually had a conversation today exactly about, you know, how do we, how do we communicate this program to families, the community, so that parents are partners? We talked about developing a communication roadmap with a variety of ways to get the information out to parents, not just email, but having forums, having Zoom meetings, using curriculum night, so that parents are informed about the decisions around what, why Carnegie? Why is this program? Why was it selected? And then lastly, I'll just share what has not changed are our teachers.
Yeah.
Our teachers are the constant and the most important part of this equation. I apologize for the math pun.
No, you don't.
Our teacher, we have, you know, the truth is, we could give them a brick and they would, they would be outstanding math teachers. We are very fortunate to have exceptional math teachers and now we are giving them updated resources and curriculum that they are going to take and continue to be exceptional teachers and confident our students will continue to be exceptional mathematicians at the middle school and be prepared for the high school.
Yeah, and please, don't take anything I say as negative. I just, I'm wondering if there's other people that aren't as well informed.
Absolutely.
And if there's just another option. And I'm just, I'm thinking that it might be good, and I'm glad that you're planning all these things because I can just see what may happen if some of these things aren't taken back.
You respond on.
Yeah.
We need to provide good information and opportunities for people to ask questions and get to know this.
Thank you.
I have one question to follow up. First of all, thank you for that data about pre-pandemic and post-pandemic because I think that is something that we have to keep a close eye on and to highlight. So I'm glad that you brought it up. Can you, because I'm not, I don't have an education background at all, can you just talk a little bit more about the PLCs? Because it's something that teachers seem to be so excited about. My question is, why? Because I don't know what they are.
So a PLC is a professional learning community. And so what it is, is it's time that's built into your schedule. So when schedules are being built, if they know that I need teacher A and teacher B and teacher C to all be off at the same time so that they can work on Algebra II curriculum, it's time that's in the schedule so they don't have to do it before school or after school. Instead of having a duty where they're monitoring bathrooms or, you know, watching the halls, they're in a classroom working together on curriculum. So it's so, so, so valuable and we all need it. And, you know, the schools do it the best they can to give it to us and we take turns in terms of, you know, how many each department gets. But everybody wants it.
So now my second question is going to be, I'm going to channel Paul Bucka. And so it sounds like not being able to expand PLCs is almost more of a scheduling, you know, issue in terms of, you know, teachers, we need teachers in certain places, certain times. They can't all be in PLCs. But is there, is there something that you need from like the budget or from us, I don't know, policy wise, that you don't have right now that you, this is Paul Bucka talking about me.
So one of the things that I didn't mention that I was planning to on the AP slide, we are going to be offering AP pre-calculus next year. So the College Board has introduced a new course. So we've always had pre-cal honors and pre-cal CP and fundamental pre-cal. Now we have a new level, AP pre-calculus. So I have put into the budget, you know, for next year that we're going to need some new textbooks. There are no textbooks actually that have been written yet, so there's nothing available. So we are going, we're teaching it next year using our existing book and using materials from the College Board. But we are going to want to get a textbook with online components and online practice and all the cool things that new textbooks have. So that'll be coming.
Out of curiosity.
Go ahead. No, I just saw like five here.
So perhaps you're not asking this, but maybe I'll ask Greg. If the teachers are all asking for more PLC time and if they don't have PLC time because they are spending time monitoring bathrooms and/or lunchrooms, et cetera, is there an opportunity to perhaps have some, hire some people that are responsible for those tasks that perhaps have historically been given to a teacher, but maybe we have something else to think about in the future in order to free up schedules for everyone, not just to, you know?
Yeah, I think that...
I don't, I'm sure you've thought of it and I don't...
No, I think it's a great problem to have that we want teachers working together to design curriculum and look at assessments and talk about the work. I think we do need to come together as a leadership team at the high school and have conversations if we want this, if we think teachers' time is valuable and we want them spending time doing X, what do we need in order to make that happen? So I think it is a conversation that Principal Bevan and the team can have. I think the reality right now is that, as you indicated, there's this management of kids in schools that does include currently teachers in that work. But Principal Bevan and Kathy Carmaniani do an amazing job trying to maximize that, but it would be looking at potentially adding people who have responsibilities for doing duties and freeing up teachers to have PLCs and conversations and curriculum development.
Or more tutoring time.
Or more tutoring time.
Pat, did you have?
I think one of your first slides showed that you had 20% turnover in your team this year with retirement.
That was over the last two years.
Two, okay. So my question, because I understand that our region is a desirable one, so like, help me understand, what does that look like? You hired three teachers. How many teachers actually applied? Like, how competitive of a process is it to get into Algonquin?
So two years ago, when we hired Catherine Harvey, I think I had 25 applications and I had a team of teachers help me with the interview process. So I gave them all of the resumes. We chose eight that we were interested in. And at that point, we were doing interviews over Zoom. So we interviewed with, actually, we were interested in eight. Six people actually got interviewed in that round. And Ms. Harvey was unanimously our top person. This last year, the numbers were about the same. And both of those two hiring years, what we ended up doing is after we had interviewed and we had a couple of people that we liked, we invited them in and we asked them to give a sample lesson. And so we got to see them in person, in front of students, teaching a curriculum that, you know, they had, I don't know, three days. They had a little bit of notice, but not a huge notice. And with all of the people that we hired, we just felt like they did a fantastic job in the classroom relating to the kids. And, you know, like especially with the young men that we hired, I was like, oh, the kids are going to love these. Because in the past, we've had mostly women in the department. We've had one to two men in the department. And now we're up to four men in the department, which I'm excited about because these kids need role models.
Again, context, I have a current math opening and five applicants compared to 22.
All right, and Joe?
I just have a suggestion, Beth. This was just a wonderful presentation and I love John's comments and talking about the correlation between the middle schools and also the high school and the Carnegie program. My suggestion is going to Greg, if there is some way that you can take these curriculum presentations and put a link on your superintendent's letter. Because I think a lot of people that have kids at the elementary and K-8, they're not going to go into the regional. But I think this discussion was so rich tonight and what you have shown, parents may say, I have a student who's really good in math. I didn't know that this was available or that we could work together as a middle school to a high school. And I think it also helps to support what is happening at Trotter or Melican with the Carnegie introducing it and seeing how it coordinates. Because of all my years on school committee, so many times we're all talking about, okay, are our kids from K-8? Are they prepared to go to Algonquin? And I think if there's some way you can segue this, just this best presentation and put it as a link, if 10 people see it, it's better than anything. And the pictures here, I love seeing how you went back to the elementary schools. These are just role models. There are so many lives that these high school kids have influenced already and would love working with them again, so. So I, if you could, this is just, thank you.
Beth, I think you have broken the record for the most common of questions.
Yes.
Awesome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So not quite as exciting as Beth's recommendation, however, so all public schools and the Commonwealth are presumed to participate in school choice unless the committee decides to withdraw from school choice. My recommendation to the committee is to withdraw from school choice for the 23, 24 school year for the reasons that follow. First, school choice student, we receive $5,000. The actual per pupil cost to educate a student at Algonquin is $21,000. Although to me, to generate revenue, I think that it's not, revenue generation is not an issue that we face at this point in time. I think it's important to keep class sizes as small as possible as a result of coming out of the pandemic, making sure that educators and students have a lot of connections. And then lastly, when you accept school choice students, it's by lottery, you can't predict a student's needs. So if a student is accepted into school choice and has a lot of need, social, emotional need or disciplinary or needs attention, it is our requirement and our responsibility to provide that level service for students. So it has the potential to take resources away from our students. So for those reasons, I recommend that the school committee withdraw from school choice for the 23, 24 school year.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion based on the superintendent's recommendation that the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District withdraw from school choice for the 2023, 2024 school year.
I'll second it.
Goodbye, Chris, seconded by Sean. Any questions? I thought you were saying, okay, then all those in favor of withdrawing from school choice, raise your hand. And that looks unanimous. Okay. So that, that $5,000 number was the number when I started doing this. I mean, that's insane.
Hasn't changed.
$21,000 is not the same number.
That is not the same.
I don't know if that was a positive comment or not.
It's fact.
Let's see, next thing I'm agenda is the superintendent of the dunk tank. All right, approval of the handbook for students and parents.
So Mr. McGowan's here and he presented last month and I don't know, Mr. McGowan, you have anything more to add?
I can just give a quick update. The concussion policy was brought up last month and we went back and made sure that was updated with a link to the current policies on the handbook. Some things with our attendance were referenced last month. We'll do a deeper dive next year into that and it's been vetted through legal right now for any updated laws and so forth. So it went out with, when Cheryl sent out the packet this week with kind of minimal updates, the concussion one was probably the biggest one. So it's essentially the same as what you saw last month.
What I, Ben is reminding me, Mr. McGowan and others, there is a small paragraph in the handbook that references the student government and that's not exactly up to date to reflect the changes that Ben has worked on this year. They are really moderately procedural and, and only a few word changes. I think it would, it's really not a binding set of rules in here, it's just more of a reflection that we have a student government that reflects the, the work of the student advisory, that is guided by the student advisory committee. So I would advise to add the few word, the few wording changes and there, I wouldn't, I would characterize them as not substantive, not to say that the work to change it wasn't substantive, but the language in the handbook is not significantly impacting the work of the SAC.
Are we happy to read them if necessary?
I don't, I don't know that the, the language changes is all that. I would say, I would characterize those as not substantive and just simply reflecting current practice, if that's okay. Probably some total of about 10 or 15 word changes, right? So that's okay with you? I, I don't think there will be any controversy in what's going in there, it's not terribly.
I'll move to approve the 2023, 2024 handbook for students and parents with the.
With the changes that.
The changes.
The non-substantive changes I just referenced.
Second.
Moved by Sean, seconded by Joan. So anyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you for including the concussion protocol, appreciate that.
And these, does the handbook get reviewed? I mean, I know you did a, I know you've been doing a deep review for the last several years, but it gets reviewed every year, right?
Yep.
And there's, so obviously, we have some policies in front of us from, from the SAC. So those, you know, there may be changes from our level that will then, but obviously not in time for this one, but for next year, they can get incorporated. All right, any other questions?
We have, the, the school committee has to approve the handbook every year.
I, I understand we have to approve it every year, but I was just wondering if, how much, how many changes are coming at us every year, if that's all.
I think the changes that we talked about last time are really changes to the constitution, which is not the handbook. The handbook really doesn't have a huge amount related to student government, but the constitution is all, is exactly what it sounds like, the guiding document for student government.
Okay, then all in favor of approving the handbook for 2023, 2024, raise your hand. That is unanimous. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan.
Thank you.
Well done.
Appointment of LPAC representative.
So since we have a new slate of officers, typically at this time of year, we send out a subcommittee or liaison list for committee members to review and think about what potential committees they want to join for next year. And we do have a new representative to, our position to the LPAC, which is our English Learner Parent Advisory Council. So the parallel is the Northborough-Southborough Parent Advisory Council for Special Education. This is with our multilingual learners and families, so ROTA runs that. So we do need a liaison and there is a meeting scheduled for June 8th here at Algonquin in the library. And it's, I did attend the last meeting, we had about, I think, 50 parents show up. So I highly recommend folks' consideration for joining that.
Is, is it a, is LPAC, because NSPAC is basically legally required.
LPAC is now.
It is now, okay. This is new.
Yep.
All right, so everybody give it some thought. Okay, approval of grants and donations.
So you have approval, a donation from Wegmans and the amount of $200 for the cultural and musical festival and international night that took place last, last week. Very thankful for Wegmans, my permission.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move to accept $200 gift card from Wegmans.
Second. Okay, moved by Sean, seconded by Karen. Any questions? All those in favor? Yeah, all that's unanimous. Okay. And.
Excuse me, I, unrelated, I just have one question. Recall actually, last meeting, we spent a fair amount of time talking about the student clubs and the, and my just, do we approve those gifts that go into the student club as well, as that part of this?
We are in the process of creating a protocol for approval from the committee. So in the future, we will, our intention is to bring that back, that conversation back at a September, early October meeting for further discussion around student activities in general.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
All right, vote to approve agreements with ARDA, Unit C Educational Support Professionals and Algonquin Regional High School Custodians.
So we had a successful negotiation with ARDA, Unit C and our custodians and we have come to a tentative agreement and the next step in the process is for the school committee to approve the agreement. And then Unit C and custodians, custodians have already approved their agreement, Unit C will need to approve its agreement and we will move forward with a successful new contract that will serve the community for the next three years.
So we need to approve both of those. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, the committee, and the Algonquin Regional Teachers Association, the association, Unit C Educational Support Professionals hereby agree to the agreement with a three-year contract being in effect from the first day of the 2023, 2024 school year and will continue in effect to and including the day prior to the start of the 2026, 2027 school year.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, moved by Chris, seconded by Sean. Any questions or discussions? This doesn't have to be a roll call, right?
I think a roll call.
A roll call, okay, this has to be a roll call, so I will start with John.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Kathleen, yes. That is unanimous.
I also make a motion that the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, the committee, and the Algonquin Regional Custodians Association, the association hereby agree to the agreement with a three-year contract being in effect from July 1st, 2023 and will continue in effect to June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Sean. Any questions? Okay, roll call, vote again, start with John.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Joan.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Kathleen, yes. That again is unanimous. Well done. Then we're moving on to superintendent's report to the committee.
I will turn it over to Principal Bevan for the principal's report.
Sure, well, thank you, everyone. First, I would like to start off, it's not in my slides, but I've provided you a copy of The Harbinger, which has come out, it came out, I think, a day or two after our last meeting, so it may feel like it's not quite up-to-date news because it came out about a month, roughly a month ago, but I think everyone here probably understands the high quality of our school newspaper. It's really truly one of the best in New England and really one of the best in the country, in fact. So I encourage you to read that and we're very proud of our student journalist, Ms. Copins, who runs The Harbinger. So in addition to that, on your tables, I've also provided a pin for you, if you'd like, that was produced by our social media marketing class and the, the pin was created on our 3D printer after, and designed by our social media marketing class, the packaging was designed by, by them and these were created and they sold them to me so that we could distribute them at the, for Teacher Appreciation Week. We had some extras and I thought you would appreciate them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. So that was fun, some fun over the last few weeks, that project coming into the finish. And so today, we are going to start off with Ben's student report and then I will update you on a few things, including Niaska, which Ms. Carmanani is going to join us with to talk about and some end of year events, which Ben will largely cover.
All right, good evening. So first up, I just wanted to talk about the student advisory committee for next year. So elections are coming up, declarations of candidacy were due to Mr. Berry today. It's my understanding that right now we have five declarations submitted, which means an election will not be necessary, but we're going to double check that tomorrow before announcing anything officially. And then with that, my term as chairperson ends with the end of the month, so this will be my last school committee meeting. So in terms of school news, graduation's coming up, which is exciting, bittersweet. And our last day of classes for seniors is next Tuesday, so that's weird. AP exams just finished, which I think school's been a lot, kind of feeling a lot lighter since, people seem a lot more jubilant. It's a big weight to be lifted, to be done with that. It's like kind of the first, last of each school year, kind of decide that summer is coming. The juniors had their prom incident-free this past weekend, so that was a lot of fun for them. The senior class has a lot of stuff coming up as we kind of wrap up the year. Kind of our big event for the end of the year is this trip to Kimball Farms we're doing next Thursday. So we rented the place out, we've got mini golfing and an arcade and bumper boats and ice cream and grilling and a driving range and a lot more. So we're, we're bussing 215 seniors out to there next week. And then we also are doing a kind of low-key event on the football field the night after our graduation rehearsal. We're calling it our senior sunset because on the first day of school, we did a senior sunrise. And we're going to have some food trucks and some ice cream trucks. It's going to be like, students are bringing their own like yard games and stuff and then once it gets dark, we're setting up an inflatable projector screen and doing a, like a senior slideshow of pictures from kindergarten all the way up until our end of high school. So that's coming up. Really For Life hosted their annual event earlier this month, which was a huge success and a fundraiser for the American Cancer Society. Here you can see their luminary bag spelling out hope on the bleachers. I unfortunately couldn't go this year, but I went last year and walked all night and it's a great event. And then Arsachum Magazine, which is our arts and literature magazine, they have their annual issue coming out sometime in the next few weeks, they're in the final stages of preparation of publication. And this here's the, the cover from last year's, which they titled Reflections and was a look back on the pandemic. And then our big annual end of year event is the carnival. It's this Friday and I'm just a little overview of all of the different activities we have happening. Lots of food being sold by the student council, we have a cotton candy machine coming in, popcorn and snacks, a snow cone machine, Shishka Berry's food truck, which is a, a hit, it's a chocolate-covered fruit on kebab sticks, so that one's always fun, Trompetta's Ice Cream Club, a water slide, a dunk tank, which will feature Mr. Bevan and Mr. Marano, an inflatable obstacle course, inflatable wipeout balls, if you've ever seen that show Wipeout where they like run across a lake on like giant inflatable balls, it's like that, but in a little inflatable bouncy house type thing, a ladder climb game, like you've seen it like in amusement park, though ours is not rigged, a speed pitch contest. We're really happy that we have Northborough and Southborough Police coming in to run that one for a little bit of like community interaction with them. So they're bringing radar guns and then our baseball and softball teams are working to bring balls and organization, so that should be a fun one. A candy store, a photo booth, live music from student bands, Henna, Boba, and Asian Snacks, cornhole, tug of war, a creative writing corner, cookie decorating, a bake sale, glitter tattoos, a ring toss game, rock painting, face painting, a pull-up contest, a Spanish and food, French food sale, popcorn sales, interactive robotic games, a movie in the library, a 3v3 basketball tournament in the gym, yearbook pickup for seniors, a first aid tent, and the cafeteria will be offering free school pizza so that there is a free meal option for any students who want that. So it's a lot, biggest carnival yet, I think, in terms of like the number of activities and number of clubs involved. We really like to try to make it as inclusive for the whole student body by including as many clubs as we can to provide activities for anyone who is, wants something to do, they'll have something they can find to do. So we're really excited for this.
Well, I will add also, well, the weather's going to be nice, it's looking out, which is, which is great, but Ben has done incredible work to get this together and to get it from where it used to be, back on its feet after the pandemic and then to expand it, this is probably twice as many features and, and, you know, elements that we've ever had before that, as I understand it. So, so again, well done, Ben, we're really excited about it.
Yeah, sorry, excuse my ignorance, is this just for the kids?
Yeah, so this is a, it's an event just for the student body.
It's during the school.
It's during the school day, so seniors get dismissed at 11:20 from class, juniors at 11:40, and sophomores and freshmen at noon, and then everyone's out there until the end of the day.
Right, I think you invited us.
We did invite you.
Yeah.
There's also free shifts in the dunk tank, if anyone's interested.
The dunk tank sounds like a fun debate. I was a little confused, right?
So yeah, it's during school, it's just for the student body. I think five years ago, no, more than, a while ago, Mr. Berry was saying they tried to do it as like more of a whole community event, a little bit more like Apple Fest, and it was a lot. and it was a lot to do and it didn't go exactly how they wanted it to, and I think doing it as, like, an intimate end-of-year student body celebration is a nice way to do it. So, yeah, it's just for the student body. Any other carnival questions while we're on carnival?
So what time should we arrive?
Noon. Burgers coming out, starting at noon, so noon. And I think you're in the dunk tank at 12:15.
Burger first.
I have a feeling Ben will be lined up first.
Probably flipping burgers. And it's also worth noting the amount of work that the faculty puts into this, none of it would really be possible without them, I mean, we have 30 clubs here and each one has one or two advisors who've been working on this since we started publishing stuff about it in January. It's a big investment financially and in terms of time, the student council puts a lot into it, but so do all of these clubs, they're all buying the supplies they need to run their booths, often, some of them are clearly selling stuff, but for the most part, I'd say the majority of them are offering it kind of free just for the sake of the experience. And then the faculty really work to make sure everything's safe and orderly and we couldn't do it without any of them, and of course, lots of emails with Mr. Bevan about it, the admin team's working on it, so, yeah.
One last question.
Yeah.
Where does the student council get its money? Because you're sponsoring quite a bit.
So we're, we do, we don't get, like, a budget or anything, all the money we spend, we've brought in somehow, a lot of it comes from Winter Ball, so that's kind of our big profit maker, which is why it was good to us to test the Winter Ball this year. We've also been super grateful to local businesses who've been providing us with sponsorships, so Wegmans gave us $1,000 towards this event in terms, in form of a Wegmans gift card. So, like, all of the food, for the most part, we buy at Wegmans and then we don't pay for it, we have some leftover money from other events, from other businesses that we utilize for this, but then, yeah, it's all, like, fundraising efforts and really Winter Ball, so we're really grateful to receive lots of funding for Winter Ball so that we could take a lot of it as profit that then we put back out into carnival, and we also try to spend a lot of that money, though, on community service efforts. We do a big food drive every year, which is running right now, and we tend to supplement the donations with a cash donation to the food pantries as well. Yeah?
Ben, are you leaving a huge endowment behind?
I'm trying my best, I, we'll see, there's a good amount of money left over, more than is typically in our account at the end of each school year, so assuming Friday goes well and we break even, we'll be good, I'm not worried, and Mr. Berry's confident that they'll be successful next year and going forwards. So, that's it, I guess, I'm done. Thank you, guys, for listening to me for the last year, it's been a great experience, and I end with just asking you to continue to seek out the student voice. Obviously, there's going to be kind of an ebb and flow of the engagement of the chairperson of the Student Advisory Committee and kind of, I know the liaisons will know this, that kind of as time goes on, some are more involved than others, and I would encourage you to seek out that student voice if it's not seeking you out and still try to make sure that that student voice is a key part of all of your decisions, which it clearly is, so thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you. So thank you, Ben, and at this point, we're going to ask Ms. Caloniati, Assistant Superintendent Kathy Caloniati, to give an update on NIESC, who the NIESC committee came through to us since we last met, so Kathy.
Thank you. So we had our NIESC visit on May 1st and 2nd, and it was, it was a wonderful visit, we had five people come from Massachusetts and Connecticut, and they were able, they actually were able to get into almost every teacher's classroom and be able to visit, and that's really impressive in just a two-day visit. We look forward to them, hopefully we'll have the same team come again to us in our next accreditation visit in March of 2025. So some of the highlights that they noted for us, they agreed with our self-study and were impressed with the level of our thoughtfulness and feedback that we were able to provide them. They said that we should probably make the Portrait of a Graduate integral into our courses and our assessments, while they saw it in many places, that it just should be something that we're constantly thinking of, and that's something that we're always talking about in our SBLT meetings as well anyways. We were commended for our strong sense of community and belonging among all the students, our connectedness between adults and students, our professional learning opportunities, so those are the PLCs, mutual respect and trust between administration and teachers, and the willingness for teachers to engage students on how they work best. We're also commended for our school improvement plan and how it's aligned to our Portrait of a Graduate and our strategic plan, and just the wide range of supports that are in place for our students, those are just some of the highlights.
All right, and so, any next steps that we can expect?
So the next steps that will happen is that we will get back a report from them within four to six weeks, so we expect that probably in the middle of June, from there, it has an action planned for us, so we will do some goal-setting, which we pretty much did already, so that, that gives us a year and a half to kind of complete that, and then we report out to them at their next visit.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions about NIESC?
And Sean, I think you've thanked Kathy a number of times, but just, I think it was a tremendous amount of work, the leadership team, and Kathy, I think, was kind of the leader of this particular project, and the visit from NIESC was well organized and I think partly the success was due to your hard work, so thank you.
Yeah, Kathy, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, well done. Thank you, Kathy. And some of the things on my next slide are just an overview of end-of-year events and Ben very much covered most of them, so I'll just breeze through these, we just had prom, we've got carnival this Friday, next Monday, we have Senior Awards Night, that seniors' last day is Tuesday, that's, if you're, of course, in the building, that's always a high-energy part of the year. May 25th is that Kimball Farms event he talked about, Senior Sunset, and then graduation, we have a rain date for, two rain dates for graduation, one before the day and one after in case we have rain, because we're very much committed to having it outdoors, and then the last day of school is June 22nd.
And when are we breaking ground?
That's a fair question, and it's one I've been getting a lot, so that's not on the slide, I will defer to Mr. Lavoy.
June 5th.
June 5th.
June 4th.
And then, not on my slides, but if, and if now is not the time to do it, and we can do it in June, it would be fine, to revisit, if you recall, in the last meeting, we had a club that has not been functional since 2016, that had $3,000.75, and the idea was to move it over into Operation Enduring Freedom. I've met with that teacher, she's agreeable to splitting that money in half where Enduring Freedom uses that, takes on that money, and the other half is used to fund a club that is aligned more philosophically with the club from which those funds were generated. I don't know if now is the, if it's okay with that, I can proceed with that.
I think we, so we did watch the school committee meeting from last month, and I think we, this committee agreed that we would take it up in September.
Okay.
So we'll put it on the agenda for September, and that will give Becky and you and me time to kind of create a student activity presentation.
Got it, okay, so then we'll delay on that, there's no hurry. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is enrollments.
So in your packet is the enrollment report, as of April 18th, we have one student increase from a prior report, so we're at 1,216, so no, no changes significant, significant changes. And I will have Becky, turn it over to Becky to give the FY23 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report and review the Statement, FY23 Statement of Revenue.
So it's unbelievable to me that there's just over six weeks left in fiscal year 2023, it feels like we just had that budget approved, but the report that's in your packet is as of April 30th, 2023, and as you can see, we have $367,211, or 1.43% remaining. We're pretty close to where we were last year at this time, we had about 0.44% remaining, or $110,000, but if you recall, we had set aside some money that we wanted to go into E&amp;D at the end of the year, so that was reserved, so we're in a very close situation to where we were last year. I really don't have any concerns with the fiscal year 23 budget, it is actually now frozen as of May 4th, we, I'm sorry, May 5th, we did freeze our budget so that we can begin the process of closing out fiscal year 23, so no new purchase orders are being entered into the system unless, of course, there's some sort of urgent or emergency-type situation, but really, we're trying to stop the flow of spending so that we can collect all of our invoices and get those paid prior to the end of the fiscal year. And these next six weeks really are, actually, I'd say the next two months really are a busy time in the finance office because we are closing out this budget, and then we are going to be opening up fiscal year 24 as of June 1st for people to start entering purchase orders and for spending for next fiscal year. So in terms of the monthly general fund report, I really don't have anything else of concern. Me neither.
I have a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the monthly general fund expenditure report until audited.
Second. Moved by Chris, seconded by Matt. Now I see why she has a problem. Okay, any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? That is Unannounced.
Okay, so the revenue report as of April 30th, you'll notice that we have made yet another revision to our investment income. Last month, I had mentioned that we had increased our estimate to be $35,000, and we have now made that estimate $50,000. Chris Teague, our regional district treasurer, did reach out to Unibank and has obtained for us a better interest rate on our bank accounts, and so we really are seeing the results of that work, and so I do appreciate that she has done that. So that is one adjustment that we've made. The athletic receipts for the spring season do continue to come in, and as you can see, we're very close to where our projections are for the athletic program for FY23. We've also received our third quarterly payment of the Circuit Breaker Funds in April, and then lastly, we are slightly under our projections in terms of student activities and parking fees, those are some of the two areas, I think, that are probably the toughest for us to really estimate, and obviously, next year, student activities will be going away, so we will not see those revenues any longer.
Less people driving?
Less people drive, maybe. Maybe.
All right, any questions for Becky before we move on? All right, then we're moving on to old business, which is the athletic complex.
So I'll turn it over to Keith for an update.
Yes, thank you, Greg.
Do we typically vote that, Becky?
I think we do.
Vote it up.
I think there's no harm in voting.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Sure, I move to accept the Statement of Revenue until audited. So moved.
All right, moved by Sean, seconded by Chris. Any questions? All in favor? That is Unannounced. Now we move on to the athletic complex.
So as Greg mentioned earlier, we do appreciate the support of both Northborough and Southborough through their town meetings, for the support of the project, it definitely has been, certainly was overwhelming, and literally that next day, the work began to prepare ourselves for construction. We have contracted with David W. White Sports Construction out of Bowe, New Hampshire, to be our contractor for the project, and we also will continue with Gale Associates, who will act as our project manager to see us through, through the end of the construction phase itself. So what they have been doing is working behind the scenes with different submittals that are required to kind of get us started, to make sure that everything falls in line, and what we're anticipating this Friday is to get a draft project plan from them that really will set the timeline out for the next few months, and we're hoping that everything comes in as planned, so we're looking forward to that. Meeting on Friday, to not only hear what their draft plan is going to be, but also be able to ask questions back and forth, which will also include when to start the project and what can start right on June 5th, because our intention is not to interrupt graduation with the project at all and to begin right after graduation's complete, but then also be mindful that we do have students on campus for about three weeks after that until June 22nd, so we're going to be very mindful of that, working closely with school administration to decide what are the types of tasks that can be completed while we still have, you know, students in the building, and this is a typical type of timeline for DW, they commented on that with our prelim meeting with them, and they understand that they want to be sensitive while our campus is still, is still active in those June weeks. So we are looking forward to that Friday meeting, and I think it's going to be very informative, and we'll certainly have an update for you in June on what we, what we can anticipate right out of the gate. In addition to that, and almost in parallel with that, since, well, in March of 2023 is when we contracted with Weston and Sampson to do some baseline soil sampling for the complex to get a good idea of what current conditions were. As a result of that, as Greg reported, last month, there was a discovery of PFAS in those soil samples, which did trigger reporting to Mass DEP. So what we've been working on since then is going through in RFQ, a Request for Quotation Process for Soil and Water Testing and Compliance Services, which is basically finding an engineer that can walk us through how to do this and do it well, because we do feel that's an expertise that would be helpful during the process, and Greg and I, in fact, we've certainly learned a lot, even through the Request for Quote process on what this would entail. So I'm happy to report this evening that we have, we are close to, we're close to contracting with a company, an engineering firm, and that is going to see us through, and we will be meeting with them and collaborating with them, as well as Gale Associates and DW, on what steps are necessary, but they have done a preliminary review of the data that we received in that March report, and we're continuing to remain optimistic on the reporting and then to mitigate the interruption to construction going forward. I think that's pretty fair in where we are right now, and we'll look forward to giving you hopefully much more information in our, in our June, in our other June meeting.
Questions?
I just had a question, because I had attended the virtual meeting of the Planning Board from Northborough, the Planning Committee, and that was January 3rd, and some good questions came up about the truck traffic and how they were going to be leaving, so is that going to be coming up at the meeting, so they talked about maybe having the police and the trucks coming this way so it doesn't involve with the student traffic?
Yeah, absolutely, so that was part of the spec that would actually went out to bid, and that was already something that was part of our preliminary meeting, but that's going to be part of the reminders that we have with them as we get started. So Gale has been in, you know, part of that process, they wrote down every one of those, you know, contingencies that were required and requirements, and DW has not, you know, has not thought that any of those were unreasonable, so everything that's been set forth by the Planning Board will be fully executed throughout the construction phase of the project.
Well, I'll repeat again, Gale Associates did a wonderful job at the three virtual meetings that they had with the Planning Board, a lot of, you know, collaboration together, and good questions came up, so thank you.
And that's why I think it was important for us to continue with Gale through the project management of this, because they do have that knowledge of, you know, where it started, and where, you know, how it went through the process and where it is now and what's important to not only the Planning Board, but the school administration and everyone that's been involved and all the stakeholders, so Gale's been a great partner for us.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Given the status that we're at with the athletic project complex, what exactly is the status of the committee, the athletic project committee?
So what we intend to do is, so the need for the full committee that we had getting to this point, you know, will no longer be necessary, we're hoping to take that committee and shrink it, and definitely get, you know, expertise to help us, help us through, and we think we found that with a couple of members to help that, so we will get down to a smaller, smaller group to keep them abreast, and many of those people will be involved in on Friday, but the need for a more at-large, you know, committee is not necessarily to take us through the process. However, we do see the need to keep the community informed, so we are working with some of our staff here at Algonquin to set up Um, so we are working with some of our staff here at Algonquin to set up routine and frequent updates on progress, including potentially some drone footage to, uh, to, to, to plot us away here. So we are trying to think creatively of how to do that best. And during the summer months, that, you know, people are gonna be wondering. And we're gonna hopefully be able to provide updates through the website and through other types of platforms.
Great, thank you.
Curiosity question. So since you refer to this as a campus and schools open, is there any responsibility if there are contractors on site that they have, go through like some query or background checks?
Yes. And that is part of the spec that, that they agreed to comply with. Yep. Because we will have our ESY, our extended school year, summer school program. It is gonna be in the H wing while all the construction is in the back of the building. Um, so that is, yeah, already, it was already part of the spec that went out and part of the contract. Yep.
So no June sporting events will be affected?
Um, what we're gonna, so that's gonna be an important question that we go through at, um, the meeting on Friday, is to lay out what, you know, athletic director Moserino has left and how we can avoid. My impression is that there is not going to be anything significantly done to the campus until all students and staff are gone after the 22nd. But wh- what can we do to take advantage of those two weeks prior from, between graduation and the 22nd? That's gonna be, I think, an interesting part of the conversation. So we're, we're anticipating minimal interruption to all school activities.
Can any of it start with this PFAS stuff?
Yes, it can. And that's, and that's one of the things we're kind of dovetailing, really, is the work that, uh, our, our environmental engineer is gonna help us with as well as them. So, you know, they haven't been in touch with each other yet. I've been between the two of them so far. And we're hoping to kind of, you know, get that really ironed out once the contracts are, contracts are executed.
The more you talk, the less I'm worried.
Well, I'm glad. The more I talk, the more I worry. Yeah. No, I mean, a lot of thought and thinking. And obviously, we're very much still in a, an aggressive planning stage to make sure we have everything lined up. And now it's a matter of, you know, pushing play, but, you know, doing it in a cautious manner where we don't have to undo any of the things we've been doing. And, um, that's a, it's an exciting, you know, part of the project to be in right now.
Great. Any other questions?
I'll just make one comment, too. I think that the, um, testing of the current soil conditions is really important for the longer-term, um, issues that may come up. You know, there's a lot of controversy about PFAS. And the last thing we want to do is have current conditions and have tests done in eight years and have no baseline. So now we have a baseline, which I think will serve the future committees and leadership team well in terms of if there are issues around PFAS, um, that emerge, um, in the future.
We're learning a lot.
We encountered a lot of turbulence.
Yeah, Kathy, thank you for bringing that up.
Oh, a little PTSD. Okay.
Well, one, one thing that's important to note, and I think we have mentioned before, is that we're not, um, you know, disturbing a footprint that already hasn't been touched. You know, we're, we're going in, in places where we already have had tennis courts, a stadium, and a JV or now multipurpose field. Those are the places that are being impacted. Um, and not obviously some site work around those spots. But, you know, we're not expanding the campus like we did in '04 and '05, which, you know, created other, you know, obstacles and such. So I think that is giving us a little bit of reassurance that we're not going to unearth anything that is gonna be a surprise. But you never know. And-
Your ass crossed.
We're gonna, you know, keep our fingers crossed.
Okay. Okay. Uh, moving on then. Thank you very much. Uh, policy development, distribution, none. Public comment? Uh, out there also none? Any at the table? Paul?
I got none on the little.
I just thought since we began this meeting with, with Ben accolades, uh, maybe we could end with a couple more. And I just was thinking about, I've known Ben almost his entire life, uh, because he was in the same grade as my son. And there were birthday parties when he was, I don't know, five, six, seven years old. I recall a Cub Scout, Cub Scout sleepover on a, a ship in New Bedford.
I forgot about that.
I didn't get much sleep, but, and from there, Ben went on. He was, um, a factor in Little League. He, he was in the booth all the time announcing players and how, you know, he sort of, I think, was instrumental in getting that whole thing going, this whole announcing thing. And so it's just been great to see you grow up. And, you know, I think you've set a great example in your role here, uh, for, for all that follow you. Um, and it's just, you know, a great example of what we'd like to see in, in students who go through the K2 through 12 system here, so.
He's the portrait of a graduate.
Portrait of a graduate. That's what I was looking for.
Thank you. So thanks again, Ben. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Sean?
Um, if, uh, if all events could be scheduled prior to a school committee meeting, it'd be fantastic. But, uh, the art show tonight was amazing. Um, and, uh, the opportunity to see, you know, art across many grade levels and across many mediums and the expression and the, as I was telling one of the teachers, the, the, the room and the environment they create besides the skill to give kids to express themselves was just, uh, fantastic.
The art show has always been phenomenal.
Amazing.
Yeah, just absolutely amazing.
And it's a tribute to the resources that the community and, and the committee allocate to, because there were, um, printed-
Yes, we were commenting on the digital art and, yeah.
Yeah, digital art and things that are created and printed here like this that are, are phenomenal, that kids have the opportunity to use and create with and express.
Yeah. I wish it were more accessible to more of the, you know, greater community. Uh, but we have a little security issue with that.
Maybe we can have a pop-up art show.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that up for another couple days? Is that gonna be up for another?
So that's, I believe it's up for two weeks.
Okay.
Uh, that sounds about right.
And so it's an op- it's if you haven't, did not have a chance to, um, attend or see the art show, obviously reach out to Sean and he can schedule a time to do a walkthrough.
I highly recommend it. Karen?
So for a couple of years now, I've been wanting to go to the Go the Distance Awards, but I haven't been able to make it. And I finally was able to make it last week. And it did not disappoint. It was an amazing night. And I just want to give kudos to NSPAC and all the students there, 'cause it really leaves you, um, you know, just appreciating all that the teachers do. And the kids were just amazing. So it was a really good night.
Well, that's great. Did anybody go to the cultural, uh, I, I was uptown.
Lots of events in the last week.
Yeah, so RotoWeb and the, uh, ELD team held international night. And it was very well-attended. All sorts of community building. And I think the highlight was the-
Food.
So there was all sorts of different types of food and, and no shortage of food. Uh, so it was a great community-building event. Um, a lot of connections made in the community. So it was wonderful.
Greg, just to loop back, uh, the art show is open until, it's up until May 26th, which is next Friday. Went around and cares to see it. Happy to show you.
I will say as well, a number of teachers have been taking their classes through, throughout the day.
Oh, that's great.
So that's been a pretty cool thing. So it's, there's almost always at least a class or two in there at any point throughout the school day. So a lot of kids are getting exposed to it as well. I think it works as a good advertisement as well for the electives available.
Maybe if you come to winter carnival. Or not come, I call, keep calling it winter carnival.
Senior carnival. I wish it was, so you wouldn't have to go in the dark.
Just the carnival.
Spring carnival.
Have a tour through the art show.
We'll make sure to bear our phones, do like video for Instagram.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay. Uh, approval of, of communication, school committee member reports? Okay, that one's moved away. I guess there are none. Approval of bills and payrolls, we will do. And agenda items, agenda items for next month are recognition of retirees, NIESC update. Another NIESC update?
I think that, by that time, we might have the full report, but potentially we could move that to September if you like.
Okay. So, so NIESC update? Question mark?
Pending, yeah, I think pending the report's delivery.
Okay. And, uh, presentation from the health and fitness department. Any other suggestions or requests? Because it is June, and I know how much you guys love long meetings.
What was really nice, though, is that I actually did notice, though, that our, there are two separate meetings. So combined is separate.
Right.
So it actually won't be that bad.
Yeah.
I mean, now, like, the lights will stay on for us.
I know, exactly.
Kathleen?
Yes.
On the subcommittees, are there any that have to be in place to approve, to get through the summer, like payroll and warrants? If any of those are changing. So is there a date that you want us to get our, our preferences to you?
I have always been very lax in this. Uh, but the payroll has been me and Kathy for the like last-
Ten years.
Yeah.
There's a legacy going here.
Yeah, because we just have the system in place. And so-
Okay. And now it's all electronics, so we just sign it.
Right.
Okay, that's good.
Are there any others? No. So I think people have time to think about it. And if they have questions, certainly ask the person who's on it currently, or anybody can ask me.
Okay. So by the way, it was always us, because we live closer to the school, to go over and sign. So.
So we'll just submit what we would like to serve on to you. Okay?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
I think you've signed DocuSign from Europe, didn't you?
Mm-hmm. From Venice last June. Yep.
Not bad, huh?
Not bad.
Between the DocuSign and the, and the, oh, we do pretty good here.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:30. This is a record. Second.
Is that a second, Paul?
Yeah.
Okay. So moved by Kathy, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. We are adjourned.